Good evening and welcome to the Board Selectments Meeting of Tuesday, June 25, 2019. If you'd like to rise and join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing on our agenda is to approve warrants. I would like a motion to approve an expense warrant for six twenty nineteen for twenty-five thousand eight hundred and five dollars and sixty-one cents. Approve a payroll warrant for six twenty nineteen for two hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Do you have that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I'd like a motion to approve the Selectments Meeting minutes from five twenty-one nineteen.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we'd like to acknowledge minutes and reports from other departments. We have the EMS report for May twenty nineteen and the Fire Department report from twenty nineteen.
Do you have a motion to that effect?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
For an announcement, we have the Brookfield Equimmetrical Pantry is accepting donations at the Merrick Public Library whenever the library is open or at St. Mary's Church for Howard Street during distribution hours, which are Wednesdays, nine thirty to eleven a.m. and Saturday from nine thirty to eleven a.m. Do either one of you have any other things you'd like to announce?
Good to go.
Okay, we're good to go. Our first one on the agenda tonight is Andrew Lowe, and this is with the Senior Center Design. You're welcome.
And so as you mentioned, I'm here today to talk about the design project that's been underway for about nine months for a potential senior center here in the Town Hall building in the lower level. Just, I'm gonna turn things over pretty shortly to Steve McAllister from Clark &amp; Green Architects, who has been the designer for the town on this project. I just want to give a little bit of context for the project for those who may not be familiar with it or maybe at home. So, the big backstory for this, which is no secret, is that, you know, Brookfield has a relatively aging population. So, as a town, twenty-four percent of your residents are sixty-two or older. There's a good chunk of folks who are in their fifties as well, so they'll be becoming seniors relatively soon. The median age in town is forty-five years. So, those numbers compared to, in the county, so Worcester County as a whole, eighteen percent of people are sixty-two or older, but that's twenty-four percent locally, and the median age is about forty compared to forty-five here. So, that, it kind of underscores the need that you have in town for services that are oriented to seniors. So, there's been a recognition over many years that there's not really a suitable place in town or a suitable public place in town to provide basic services to seniors. So, I know that there's been a lot of community support from the local churches who have provided space for the Council on Aging to do various things. There has been efforts here in the Town Hall to utilize certain spaces for senior activities as well, but none of those have really been deemed an ideal kind of long-term home for senior-related services here. So, in twenty fifteen, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, who was your managing entity for community development at that point in time, had worked with the town to seek funds through CBGG to do a planning study to evaluate potential locations for a senior center in town, if that's what the town wants to do. And they looked at a number of different options, and it had come down to, you know, the senior, putting a senior center here in the Town Hall or potentially looking for other options to build a brand-new senior center elsewhere. And for various reasons, it was deemed that the preferential location would be here in the Town Hall. So, based on that, the town asked my employer, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, to help seek design funds in twenty seventeen. We were very pleased that the grant was awarded by the state, and Steve and his firm were engaged to perform the design activity here. So, as I mentioned, it's been about an eight- or nine-month process to date since Steve started up. We've had two widely-publicized public events on this project. There was one last December, there was one this past March. There have been a number of working project team meetings involving the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, as well as members of a number of other relevant town committees. And so that's kind of the backstory here. We do have a handout here that has the proposed layout for the senior center, and with that, I'll turn things over to Steve to kind of give you the quick version of what's proposed for...
Five-minute version.
The five-minute version.
Five-minute works.
Nice.
All right, well, it's nice to be here, and thank you for inviting me. I will give you a very quick tour. You know where it is, we're standing over it.
Yep.
And this is the working drawings as they progress, demolition plan explaining what has to be removed, and there's quite a bit of stuff left. And then, more important, going to be the floor plan layout, and just put a little bit of time into that. This is the old entry where the police station came in. We're lowering that down so that it'll be down at the floor level. We are replacing this slab, insulating under it, and improving drainage under it so that that will be a much drier space. The office area and reception area is here, so as people come in, they can be greeted and, you know, just checked in with. There's a library, a quiet kind of space here. This is the multipurpose, primarily dining space here. There are a couple of classrooms that can be used for various different functions. There's a small kitchen here that's intended for two things. One is, has a warming kitchen for meal service such as tri-balé that serves a great many of the smaller senior centers in this area, and it also is gonna be equipped for small cooking classes now and then. This existing mechanical room is staying, there's just too much stuff in there to move. And the rest of the space will be dedicated to mechanicals and electrical with a future space for elevator at some place, at some time, which we're assuming will be here, and if it's not there, it'll probably be here. So, those will not be part of the public areas of the senior center. The restrooms will be here, men's and women's, and a janitorial closet. And then this area here is the place where the pool table goes, which we were told is a very important function of senior center.
Yeah, very important, yeah.
It's a simple layout, it's not large, it's intended to meet the needs as they stand now, and it's intended to begin the process of rehabilitating this building and making that a useful space, giving seniors something they don't presently have. And the entry will take place off of parking at the rear. There's currently parking here. Some of this will become accessible in proportion to what's required by the code, and the rest of the stalls, even though they might not technically meet that, will be about ten feet wide, so they're gonna be adequate. And you would enter by coming down a ramp system under a canopy along the side in the alleyway, and there's a second exit that comes out here, which is actually right, will come up underneath where the present janitor closet is and then out. So, the entry canopy looks like this. This is the rear of the building, this is the side along the alley, and if you're coming from the street, you'd come down these stairs, or you can come around and down the ramp. The accessible parking is back in this area. So, that will open this up, you know, with a nice glazed entry door. Here, you're looking back at it. And this shows the major space of the building, which is that multipurpose area with the library space back in the old, when I think were the cells at one time. And we're leaving the brick as much as we can, we are leaving the stone vault in place that was far too expensive to move. And the whole design is geared toward trying to accomplish this in a straightforward, I would say relatively economical way. It's not an easy project, but it will, I don't feel that it gills the lily in any, you know, great degree. But there's a lot of work to be done, like, there's a lot of stuff that has to be moved, dealt with, moved, removed, and, you know, the floors will be a nice composite floor, you know, wood, plastic composite, which we've all seen. So, it should be a very, you know, functional and usable senior center for the years to come. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, if they're specific, or general.
Bill?
Okay. Just, just one of the concerns that keeps popping up is just the concern about moisture and mold and mildew and sort of being, it's, you know, partially below grade. How has that been addressed in the engineering and design of the project?
We are, we're planning to put a drainage system below the slab near the perimeter so that any moisture that gets in can be directed, you know, and pumped back out. That's a primary way of doing that, and replacing the slab should help that too, because there will be a moisture barrier and insulation above, so that that will prevent water entry. And then the third component of that is dehumidification. This will be an air-conditioned space, and it's not primarily because it's hot, it's primarily to get moisture out and temper the air so that it doesn't retain that moisture. So, it should be a vast improvement over what we have now. And this area in the front, too, will be regraded. We're actually going to open two of those windows and put two new windows in at the rear to show.
Close here on the side. You've been seeing windows on the side.
There are four closed-up windows along the rear.
Yes, yep.
And the rear just gets some windows that look like the other windows.
If I could add one thing to the question, Bill, is that our understanding is that Central Street is going to be reconstructed next year.
Yeah.
And as part of that, we have coordinated with the Highway Department to see what they can do in terms of drainage improvements to try to keep the water from people drinking downstairs to begin with.
On the rear side, we're adding these two windows in between the three that were there. That one's actually a mechanical louver, and it will remain one. And then, there's a small window up in the janitor closet, that will become a doorway for exiting. So, here's a canopy along the side that you see there. So, that's the quick tour.
So, the elephant in the room is, a couple of years from now, what's it gonna cost to do?
I think it's probably in the order of one, three, four million dollars, something like that. I think that's, you know, what our estimate showed.
Okay.
And obviously, that depends on market conditions at the time, you know, but which nobody controls. They're high right now, it could be lower at some point, depends upon the economy.
Oh, sure.
So, everybody's busy right now, and we're seeing the effects of that. It's hard to get there, isn't it, it's hard to get, you know, you're getting fairly low prices.
So, I've been spending a good deal of time recently on elderly issues. CMRPC has been gracious enough to conduct several workshops and the like to focus on that. And one of them recently talked about the sharing of community space. And as I look at this thing, it's, yes, maybe you label it as a senior center, but at the same time, the functions that are provided are really community functions.
Yeah.
So, really is as much, I mean, it's really the collaboration between senior and community that could make this thing work.
I think you're right.
Yeah, I agree on that.
The design will be flexible for a lot of different uses. It's a simple plan, it's not tailored too much to one thing or another, and that would provide for a lot of different uses.
Yeah, I think that goes back to why the committee coming out of the planning phase of this project thought that this was a good location, because, one, it's about the right size, and it's an interesting space, it's not a cookie cutter space for the seniors, but it would also be a way to help revitalize the Town Hall as a flexible space that was in the lumber room, you know, because, you know, right now, you basically got all the activity on this level, but, you know, there's an interesting space upstairs and downstairs.
And as I see it, I mean, what this does is this sets the ground.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's exactly right. In twenty years, it may be that the seniors need a bigger space. That's still a good usable space down there. Other things as well, it might be a youth center at that time, you know, it's got many possibilities.
In terms, you're going back to your funding question, the program that's funding this phase of the project could be used towards the project, but no single grant would be enough to pay for something on this size unless the state changes its rules for the program. They have made some noise about potentially allowing applications for larger projects. You know, so you'd have to sit out future, you know, some traditional grounds to get a larger award, but that's not imminent.
So, is that CBGG?
Yes, so CBGG could be used, you know, as it stands now for probably a little less than half of what this might cost. So, there are other programs out there, USDA has a program, it's a combined grant and loan project, and, you know, it's always good to try for a earmark through the state legislature as well.
What I was gonna say is that if we have things like this ready, waiting, and shovel ready, we missed getting that information in this year, but, and that was something I was gonna bring up under other, is start to build a relationship with the new office support that Ann Govey has, that we may have missed some of the communications because they're communicating a little differently than they have in the past.
Well, we've been working on them.
Yeah.
I've met with them twice.
Yeah.
I'm looking for about eighty, I've been looking for about eighty thousand dollars, that's my target.
Yeah.
So, so back, go back to this one, we'll do that under other, right?
We'll get there, yeah.
So, back, just so we're clear, if we're talking one point seven-ish, right? CBGG is half of that?
Yes, so as it stands now, you can apply as a single town up to eight hundred thousand dollars on any grant, and there are some, you know, overhead costs and things like that, so not all of that would be...
No, but it would help mitigate.
Yeah.
We could mitigate.
Take a big chunk out of it. The one caveat, as we've discussed, Clarence, in the past with Block Grant, is if you apply to do this project, a senior center project with Block Grant, you have to continue using this space as a senior center pretty much only for five years. After that, it becomes a flexible space.
Right, so now, let's move down this, because the session down in Oxford, wherever it was, right, they were talking that community space, push community space. So, are there grants other than CBGG that are real more community-based?
There are some out there, and there are a lot of ways to approach this. The trick is that every grant program wants to make sure that you have all the other funding secured before you can get the grant. So, it's a matter of sequencing, there's the State ADA program that perhaps parts of this could be covered by, there, as I said, USDA has grants and loans, and one of the nice things about their loans, I, not that anybody wants to go for loans if their grants are applicable, but you don't have to have a bond rating to utilize their loans, so I think that may be a factor here.
If I could ask, now, that USDA, wasn't that, isn't that what Wagon Wheel Mobile Home Park put in when they got their, they have one of those when they put in their storage system up there?
Yeah, that's under the same umbrella of USDA rural development, I'm not sure if it's the exact same program, but it is the same financing model.
So, it really says that we've got a bunch of homework to do relative to funding.
Yeah, and this isn't something that you're gonna be able to go out and try to build, you know, next spring.
Oh, no.
No, no, I understand that.
It's gonna take, you know, a lot of community support and a lot of, you know, investigating what's out there and monitoring the market conditions as well, because, you know, it could be a fifteen percent difference between, you know, when the economy's bad and it's thriving for something like this.
That's true.
It's a pretty complicated project, but I think it's a, we'll have enough support.
Yeah, one of the, on the USDA piece, they've been hanging around these sessions and really looking to that next project in this area, so they're in tune of wanting to do something, you know, for their purposes as well. So, the thing that we need to think about, and really, this is Kathy's time, of doing some investigation as to what approaches we might wanna take. Again, getting back to Bill and his committee and his recommendations as far as how we might approach moving this.
I guess my question, which kind of, not to sort of push you, you know, moving on to the next step, so, is who will then facilitate the next steps? Because the next step is really putting together a funding package and a presentation of the town. Is that something that the Select Board is looking for Town Hall or the Town Improvement Committee to do? It hasn't really been, it's been the CBGG Grant Committee for both of this process, but...
I almost feel like we need some sort of a separate one-off where we get a rep from CBGG, Town Hall Improvement, and our, and our grant writer, and get, like, a small working group together, maybe not a formal committee, but see if we could get some sort of a representative working group, because I think we don't know yet until we, until we explore the options, whether it's CBGG, because that's the best we have in the offing, whether it's a combination of CBGG and perhaps the loan program, whether it's, you know, and plus just the whole getting, getting what the dollar amount is, right, so that we know what we're even chasing if we, if we tried to do it in the next, like, year or two. Not that we would, but just, we have to work to some number, right? And it's just like with the police station, we got a number, went back and sharpened our pencil, went back and figured out how we make it work, right? So...
And I know an expert in the room, and it's not me.
On what? How to make that work?
Yes, Mr. Simpson?
I, I would take it as an action, though, is, I'll reach out, because I've been, I've been horrible in my participation in CBGG, so I'll take it as an action to take it to that committee to see if we can get a rep from that committee. Bill, would it be yourself, or is there somebody else from your committee?
Well, I'm definitely on board to be part of any, any steps going forward, and that's my...
Yeah, but I think there's a certain amount of collective. Steve, did you want somebody to at least be part of the discussion? Or do you wanna take it back to your committee and find out if somebody wants to be part of the discussion?
That's what I would do with this, you know, this is certainly my introduction to this project, so...
So, maybe we circle back around in our July meeting, have something together.
Yeah, we can circle back.
Because I see this as the ground floor.
Yes, it is.
I mean, we gotta get the air, and the issues that you've identified, Bill, it gets them, we're working. Otherwise, we're not.
Yeah, it gets rid of all the problems that we've had downstairs.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's a great first step.
It is, yeah.
Or second step, once we get the, the rest of the...
I think we're on step like forty-five right now.
But we have... Big, giant steps versus the little steps.
But we have to find, though, I mean, I know one of the rooms down there is being used for storage for a lot of the town records, so we'd have to find room to put that.
Well, we've already, well, yeah, we should be able to.
They'd be going upstairs.
They'd have to, well, that's where they were at one time, they were upstairs, and now they're down.
So...
Excellent.
Yeah, excellent.
Thank you.
I like it. So, thank you for the, for the presentation from both of you.
You're very welcome.
Do we need any type of motions, or just a discussion? Record of the discussion is enough, because I'm trying to keep notes.
I think just a discussion, it'll...
Well, you're gonna go off and form a working group.
Okay, so I'll make, I'll make a motion to go ahead and, and form a nominal working group, and we'll come back with a membership list next meeting.
I'll second that.
Sounds good to me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you for, doesn't look nice, it would be really nice to see, yes, that's how I feel, too.
I'd say that I'm really impressed with what our ingredients come up with and all the work that they've done, and I think they've heard the concerns and the draft that they've made, and really are focused on keeping the project appropriate to the needs of the towns and for the building, and they're to be committed for it.
Well, we certainly hope that we get it, you know?
And I just wanted to say one thing about timing, so I think the Board is aware that the grant that's funded this phase was just extended, but Steve plans to wrap this up, and he'd need to get a couple of technical drawings.
We're very close, yeah, we're at a problem ninety, ninety-eight percent. We have to go with the State Historic Commission, so it should be a problem. Have to go before the ZDA, which hopefully won't be a problem, but we passed muster with the local historical commission with no problem, so I think that, you know, confident once that trail is, has been gone down and been finished. I mean, the drawings themselves are about ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent, the specs are ready to forbid, you know, inserting for the granite, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is to sign the Austin Design Amendment Contract.
Motion signed.
But I wanted also to mention that it had gone, they did an adjustment in the fees, and it's at fifteen hundred dollars, and I know that the Town Hall Improvement Committee already approved of that.
Well, you're, you're the awarding authority, so we have the authority to sign or approve it.
Oh, yeah, I understand that, but you had, Karen had told me that you had met and you approved this fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to sign all three members of the Board of Select.
It's a matter of saying aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we have to get the Town Council, and we also have to get the Town Council to sign it, too.
And this has already been reviewed by the Town Council?
No, she's probably gonna approve of it, I don't know.
Hey, Bill?
I'm sorry, Bill, we already voted on it, but I did have one question, but has this already been reviewed by Town Council?
Which part?
Austin.
The Austin contract.
It's, the contract's already been, you've already signed the contract about a year ago.
Oh, this is just the amendment to the contract.
Yeah, this is an amendment.
Yeah, because it has a signature for Town Council on it.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, thank you. This is just a fee, fee adjustment, more so than the contract.
Yeah, that's what it is, it's fee adjustment. Okay, and the next one is here, this is another, it's a letter also, to authorize the chair for the THIC to apply for the ADA variance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think we all have to sign this one, because there's three of them.
That's the door handle thing.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, on, on that particular topic, that's, that was a really slick solution for the, for the doors.
We can credit, Bill.
We can talk Town Hall stuff if you want, or...
Sure.
Because on the, on the sort of item of the Town Hall ADA variance, I might speak a moment?
Yeah.
Sure.
I don't wanna belabor the meeting any longer than I have to. But the variance that we're looking for is for the platform lift that was voted on a year and a month ago, and we have to apply for a variance to the Architectural Access Board because it doesn't meet the full requirements for accessibility. There are some, they allow it as a variance item, and apparently, they're getting more and more strict about that. So, we've been working our way through this application for a while, and now we feel it's ready, so we're preparing it to send out. So, that's why we request for that. We've also, as the Town Hall Improvement Committee, been doing minor accessibility improvements based on the ADA report that was provided. I think you might have seen, because all the doorknobs aren't allowed, they have to be all latch.
Yeah.
So, we tried out one latch on the door going into the Clerk's Office, and it was a twenty-dollar version of a hundred and fifty-dollar doorknob that we just had, we just put in to replace the old, it's a, it's not perfect, it's not super heavy-duty, but it works and meets the requirements. So, it's kind of an experiment to see how the twenty-dollar version of the fix works, so, so far, we haven't heard any complaints.
It works.
So, that's a good sign.
It works.
Just on other items that we're tackling, we've got the electrician who is taking care of the electrical work in the, what's gonna be the new tax collector's office, and removed the wiring from what's going to be the new bathroom, so that we're able to combine that, that worked out well. We had a setback because of our plumber that we had in, under contract, backed out because of an injury, so we've had to go out and find a new contractor. We believe we do, we'll be voting on that tomorrow at our meeting, in which case, we'll be able to move forward with the bathroom project very soon in terms of gutting that space, putting in the plumbing, and putting in the new bathroom. It could be in the next couple of months that we get that project...
Good, outstanding.
Completely.
More or less. Hopefully, I don't wanna say done, because every time we say that, then something else comes up.
It's an old building.
Yeah. So, those are sort of the big items that the Town Hall Improvement Committee is tackling right now. Yeah, so, any questions for us in terms of what the progress of the committee has been in items?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Awesome work.
Slow and steady, mostly slow.
That's pretty steep.
Hey, it's gonna get done sooner or later.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Bill. The next one on the agenda is to sign the Leonard Engineering invoice for the Hayden Hyde project.
Motion to sign.
Now, what's the amount?
The amount is, it's a grant, it's seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Great, uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is to sign the BETA invoices for fifteen post road. And these did not, uh, this came in from CM, from CMRPC.
Right.
And, um, this wasn't sent out until six, four, nineteen. They had sent this, and this is on the Finney property.
Right. As we've motioned to sign that invoice, it would appear, Andrew's already gone, but it appears Andrew will be back with us on July ninth where we will talk alternatives. He has yet to hear back from Mass Development and their, uh, activity and how they might be, be, uh, part of this. But I'm hopeful for the ninth we'll have different approaches to Finney.
Yep, and this is, this is another grant also. And let's see, the total task here is all the... Because there was, there was, um, some reporting, um, there was site plan, public representatives. And one of the totals for one was five thousand two fifty, if you want, if you need that back.
And the big deal is that this is several hundred thousand dollars for cleanup. It is not, um, at, at one point, we had a document that told us to clean up Finney, it was forty thousand. We had another document that said it was going to be four hundred thousand. It is probably going to be in the order of four hundred thousand dollars of cleanup activity to make the property whole and usable.
Then there was another one for four hundred dollars. All of them there also. Okay, and this is the one.
And the good news is the Beta folks have actually approached at least one potential, uh, use, potential user of a space like this. Not that there's not any sign up or anything, but that they have at least had conversation and hopefully they'll share some of that on the night. Is this, it's gonna be a difficult pro... Oops, oops, sorry, to move.
Well, you can say it's a difficult...
It's gonna be a difficult project as far as property to move because the two properties should have been connected at one point, they never were.
I know they were.
So makes it a little more difficult where there's readings on both sites.
The next one here is, um, is to sign and pay Clark and Green invoice, number three, for the Senior Center. And that's another grant, it was twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars.
Through CBDG, so a motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, the next one here is also, um, it's to sign the CDBG grant, um, part four, seventeen and eighteen.
These are invoices for CMRPC.
Yeah, these are the invoices for the FY twenty-eight. That's what that one is.
So just, just while we're talking about this, Kathy's been working very closely with Andrew and Eli on the grant projects that we've been working. And what we need to consider over time is how Kathy can take on more responsibility so that we can maybe more cost-effectively use these funds specific to town efforts rather than, um, CMRPC. Not to say that CMRPC would, would be out of the picture, but that there could be a different sharing where some of Kathy's time could be funded.
I know Kathy's been in, she's in quite a bit, working on all of the Fin grants. Looking to see anything she can get for us. One of the other ones. And this is invoice seventeen, because there was three of them. Oh, here it is, I'm sorry. You had already signed.
Oh, yeah.
Do you wanna put the paper back? Yeah, put it back on.
Yep, I can do that. Something I can do.
Thank you. Then we have invoice number three to sign.
Yes.
How much are each invoice?
One of them was nine ninety-four seventy-one, one is six eighty-seven ten, one of them is twenty-six hundred, five dollars and twenty-eight cents, and all of it's paid for out of the CBDG grant funds.
A good use of our tax per...
Those are the, are those in support of Hayden Hayden or those?
Yes, yes.
Yes, this is Hayden.
These are Hayden Hayden.
That one is two thousand nine ninety-seven cents.
Okay, the next one is on the workers comp. It's, um, MEGA. And, uh, that cost on this one, the cost of it had gone up from last year. And I guess it's because of, from what I understand, it's because of, um, the employees' contracts and all things like that, that's why it went up. Last year it was twenty-five, five, nine, oh, and this week, this year it's twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. That's on the, um, MEGA renewal quote for FY twenty, the workers comp.
Oh, because it's not so much the contract as it would be the, uh, just the overall salary.
Yeah, it was the con salaries, that's why it went up. Okay, where is the signing point?
There's a red tab over there.
Yeah, but there's no... There's no place to sign it though.
Yeah, pick a place and...
Maybe. That's what I was just looking for, I'll go through the whole packet and see if it was on the back page or something.
There, there you go.
There we go, way back here.
Anyone's wondering where Karen is this evening? Karen's neighbor clipped a telephone pole and her street is closed off with the power lines down and the like.
Across the driveway?
Uh, in front of the dr, in front, on the street, in front of the driveway. So she wasn't going anywhere. They said it would be several hours before power would be restored.
Pressing upon, because of the response, I don't know why it's, it's really security, especially for her.
And the young fellow that was in the accident, she said he was fine, his telephone pole was split right in half.
Yeah. So we did a motion, right?
We did, Andrew seconded and Demi voted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and these, what's next is some more special use permits for the lakes. And this one is for, um, eight, nine, eight, nineteen at the Quabog Pond for the Relay for Life of Southern Worcester County. And the other one is for bass fishing, and that's it. I don't think this one should even come here, this is for Apple Road in Brumfield.
Wrong place.
Wrong place. So you just have...
I guess we're not approving that one.
Nope, so if we want to approve this one, it's like a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Beth just has to sign the one.
We need to vote it.
Sure, mo, motion to sign the special permit?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, this is, um, vacation, let me see, there's another one before this. Some resignations here.
Did you go too fast?
It was supposed to have been right under here. But we'll skip over the resignation till I find, till I find it. Okay, and this is a request, uh, vacation carryover. And this is from, um, Chief Martel, and I guess he has forty-eight hours.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And then there's also one from Karen to carry over twenty hours of vacation also, I'd like to motion.
Motion to Karen, to approve both.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I don't even know where the resignation is. Oh, it's down here, down here. We have, um, the resignations will go up. We have two from the, um, CIPC. We have Al Jones and we have Bob Falter. And, you know, both of them have done an excellent job on this committee, we hate to see them go. So we'll need two more members, so I'd like to have a motion for that. We accept their resignation?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we have all of these, um, now we have the FY twenty appointments. And there's quite a few of them here, used for the work, so.
So those highlight would need to be read.
All the ones, so I can start off reading some and if you want to finish, finish them. Okay, on the Advisory Board, uh, for a, for a three-year term is Krista LeBrone. Agricultural Commission is James Dolan and Ron Stotter. And Kenneth Cleveland will be, oh, he's also. And then we have, um, AG Alternates are Donald Haviland and Mac Ladoo. Animal Control is Sarah Perdue. And then Beach Committee is Rosie Kudalsky, Donna Sullivan, Al Jones, Leonard Farr, Kathy Farr, David Ayers and Matthew Landevan.
Actually, Donna resigned, but we, we can just leave this go and then we can do it formally. Yep.
And now, uh, this is for, um, Local Building Inspector, it was the assistant, but now I guess they're calling it local. And his name is John Zacharets, I can't say, and that's still twenty-twenty-two. And then on the Bylaw Committee is, um, James Cook, Barbara Wilson and Tara Brown, and Robert Bonds and Harry Pearson.
So I think we need to be careful because I know fairly certain Tara Brown resigned.
Oh.
I don't know, did she get back to Karen about being willing to go back on?
No, I don't know, I don't remember seeing anything that she wanted to resign.
I, I, I'll mark up this one one more, or...
Yeah, mark, yeah, you can mark that one.
I'm gonna mark up with just a little box to say...
Yeah, some little blocks and we'll tell Karen, okay.
The boxes are questions.
And, okay.
Yeah, I know Donna's was late in coming, so that this doesn't surprise me, but...
We want to reappoint, um, Peter O'Connell to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Right.
And then we'll need two others seeing that, um, Bob and, um, Al got off. Okay, now this is the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. And, um, this is for a one-year plan and it's Kevin Urkle, he will be the alternate. And then we need, uh, to reappoint all the CBG Advisory Committee. Uh, we have Beth Coughlin, Bruce Clark, Lucinda Thompson, Bethany Roberts, Mary Lou Knight and Bill Simpson.
And then we'll just take, I would like to revisit the Bylaw Committee.
Sure.
So, do we, do we have, we don't have a requirement in our bylaws to have a Bylaw Committee, correct? Because I, one of the things I'd kinda like to see us do is, is really have a charter for that committee before we reappoint them and get some concurrence from them.
I think there was a charter when it did start. I'll have to have Karen, I think I don't know.
Before we even reappoint that committee, because I, I, I don't feel like we provided clear guidance to that group with regards to what the intent is and what we feel we need as a community. And I think we need to get some, a little bit more of an azimuth about where we're going from a standpoint of the bylaws.
Well, there is a note here on the page that pulled off an ask. So we should schedule something for later in the summer?
Yeah.
With this committee?
With this committee, I think.
You wanna grab that on your minutes?
Certainly.
And I'll, I just put a note up, I asked Karen if there was a, I'm pretty sure we had a charter when we first started that committee. Okay.
All right.
Okay, and, uh, okay, we did that. And then, uh...
Conservation?
And then, well, we, uh, also on the Capital Improvement Committee, um, at large, a liaison to the, for the Board of Selectment is Kathy LaRaca, so we want to reappoint her. What I'll do after I read all of these and we'll vote to reappoint all these people that we've just mentioned.
Yeah, as, as discussed.
As discussed.
Right.
That go along with you, I like that?
Certainly, what I'll do is as dis, when we say as discussed, I'll, I'll annotate any exceptions that, that we're not voting, how's that work?
Okay, oh, yeah, good point.
All right, then we, then we'll come back down here. Conservation Committee is, um, Kenneth Cleveland and Michael Dean. Constable for a year is Arthur Tatro.
Is there a reason you didn't mention Marianne?
Oh, she didn't have it highlighted, is it highlighted on you? Oh, yeah, okay, Marianne Morano, she is going on, um, she's a new person on the Conservation Commission also.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and on the Council on Aging, we have Bethany Roberts.
Yep.
We have Mara Canty, Mary Filato, Sally Brown and Brenda Parish. On the Cultural Council, we have William J. Simpson to reappoint and Madeline Swanson. And we'll go down here to the Emergency Medical Squad Chief, Donna LaFleur. And also for Emergency Medical Squad Officers, we have Peter Martel as the captain and Matthew Graves as the lieutenant. And the Emergency Medical Squad are all up for an appointment. Terry Anderson, David Martel, Daniel Driscoll, Ashley Max, Richard Phillips, Jay Haley, Matthew Rodrick, John Glennon and Raymond Landoni and Michael Webb.
Continuing?
Continuing. Oh. Let's see, let me get the paper.
Emergency Medical Squad, three years.
There, there are more, yeah, I just got, Matthew Graves, Donna LaFleur, Peter Martel and Mark Lovely. And then Fire Chief and Forest Fire Warden is Peter Martel. And firefighters for three years, um... And firefighters for three years, um, Assistant Chief is, um, Herbert Chaffey, and Captain David Martel, and Lieutenant William McLeod. And Mike Serry had said there's no appointments for these, no appointment slips. And even where, this is another question I was gonna ask. I know with all of the firefighters, I think Peter, Peter does all of these himself, doesn't he?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, he's supposed to be the one to do the appointments for the firefighters.
Yeah, so we really don't have to do them then.
No.
No, we don't have to do them.
My understanding is that it's, that our structure is such that he's the one that ought to be the one to do them.
Yeah, that's what I, I had thought that myself when I saw all of these highlighted.
Yep.
Okay. Now, Historical Commission, we have Thomas Morse and Judith Hitchcock, and Michael Metz. Historical Public Record Committee, Linda Lincoln from the Board of Selectmen, Sally Brown from the Library Trustee, and Brenda Mettiville from the Library Trustees. We have the Insurance Advisory Committee, Barbara Clancy for the retirees, Sherry Gillen for teachers rep, Linda Lincoln for the town, town hall retirees, Joanne O'Connell for the non-certified school staff, Sergeant Stephen Parisow for the Police Union, Holly Chisholm for town clerk, town hall staff, Dennis Clark for the water, and Donald Herbert for Highway Department. And then we have the Master Plan Implement Committee. We have Russ Faniff, Allison Wellman, and Linda Purce.
We should put a hold on this.
Put a hold on this one, too?
And, and the reason, I know Russ had moved off to planning and Linda had resigned.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, we really haven't done anything that, the, if we could put in the notes that we need to reform once the open space activity is moving forward. We need to circle back to master plan.
Okay.
So what should I annotate?
What we should say is, uh, Master Plan Implementation Committee not appointed, um, held until open space activities are completed.
And then the same thing, I, she didn't, we do have open space down here, but it's probably just unofficial, no applications. I mean, no appointments needed for them either. It's on the bottom.
Yeah, we don't have to do it.
No, we don't have to do those yet.
Yeah.
Overseers of the Dispatch is Michael Blanchard. Parking clerk and hearing officer is Michael Serry. Personnel boards are all set. We have police officers, one year, Serendio Allen, Brian Kirby, Greg Pianca, Michael P. Green, Justin Dufault, Herbert Duggan, Matthew Niles, Brian Sterns, Joel Wilson, and Daniel Driscoll. Now, Quabog Valley Community Development is Clarence Snyder. And then on the Recreation Committee is Lisa Hammerhand. Board of Registers with the Town Clerk is Shirley Sanborn. Source Water Protection Committee, Trudy O'Connell and Jennifer Brawowski.
Oh, and Bruce. All right, my, Bruce is highlighted.
Oh. I don't have another page. This is my last page.
Oh, well, then I'll finish up then.
No, you can finish up. That's my last one.
Bruce, and then, um, Highway Superintendent, Superintendent of Insects and Pest Control is Ryan Paul Grand. And that's that for that page. And then the last page, Tree Warden is Mary Lou.
That doesn't sound right.
That's not right. Ryan is the tree warden.
He's the prime tree warden.
Yep.
Ryan Popriani.
Yeah, Mary Lou would not be happy if we tried to appoint this tree ward.
Because you were the, uh, you were on-
For like two months, yeah. Fortunately, Ryan wants it, or not wants it, but he's willing, and he's got some skills.
Yeah, he's, well, he's already done yeoman work as far as I'm concerned on that topic, just because of feedback that I received the other day. All right, so that does that. And then we have, under Veterans Agent, three-year, Gary Lapine. I have WRTA representative is Rose Carrier. I appreciate Rose doing that. Zoning Board of Appeals, Ken's the, uh, the only one that needs to be reappointed, and zoning, um, Zoning Board of Appeals. I, interesting, interesting.
Oh, yeah.
So, so just to be clear, what this document is telling me, the Zoning Board of Appeals is Tim Simon is appointed to twenty-twenty-three. Ken is appointed to twenty-twenty-four, Charlie Wilson to twenty-twenty, Bill Knall to twenty-twenty-two, and Danielle Corrie White to twenty-twenty-one, and an alternate member of Steve Comtoys to twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, but our, and our annual town report, though, states that Steve Comtoys is Chair, which has been de facto how he's been, and that Tim Simon and Roger are the alternates.
Well, maybe they change, well, we'll have to check that out. That's another one.
Well, that's what was interesting, was that actually, um, I recall the Selectmen meeting where that went down, was that, um, when Steve was still on the Board of Selectmen, Tim Simon was the one that was put forward to be the primary member, and I believe he chose to appoint him as an alternate and changed his own appointment to being the primary. So apparently, the record's never got updated to reflect that, that Karen's working off of.
Okay.
It's indicated that one in the town report.
So it needs to, what we have is we need to have confirmation.
We'll have Karen check on that.
Okay, Zoning Enforcement Officer Zach Tomo and Town Council, KP Law through twenty-twenty.
And I would like a motion to appoint all of these as we have discussed.
Second.
And reappoint them.
Oh, mo- motion to that effect?
Yeah.
Second.
Second, you had something you wanted to add?
Uh, well, I second with the following exceptions, that you've indicated that, uh, Ms. Sullivan has already withdrawn from the Beach Committee. I requested a hold for the entirety of the bylaw committee until we have better clarification on the charter for that committee. Ms. Lincoln indicated the Fire Chief is the appointing authority for the firefighters, and that he should do and sign the slips for that. And then, uh, Mr. Snyder indicated we would not appoint a Master Plan Committee until the Open Space Committee activities are closed out.
Yep.
Okay.
So seconded as stated.
Good.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. And now I see Andrew's still in the crowd, and so is there something that Andrew needed from us before we jump on to the next topic?
Um, thank you, um, yeah, I, I just had a question, uh, you know, we of course-
True, I'm sorry.
Earlier about, uh, setting up a date for a venue for a public hearing to amend the FY seventeen CDBG grant, and I think we had thrown around either doing it as part of a CDBG Advisory Committee meeting, um, but they wouldn't be available as an evening meeting, or we could do it perhaps on the next Selectmen's agenda, um, but it could be a long and, and kind of interactive conversation, and I didn't want to, um, take over your, your upcoming agenda either.
This is gonna be the fini discussion?
Partly that, yeah. So it's a discussion to, you know, as you know, there's some unexpended money left in the FY seventeen CDBG grant, and, uh, there, we've been narrowing down options for what could be done with it, and one would be to proceed further with the fifteen post-road project into a new phase for that, and another could be housing rehab, or it could be some of both. So we just, you know, in order to make those changes, there has to be a hearing.
Okay, so we need a hearing.
And we want to do it pretty much as soon as possible.
Yeah, but why don't we-
Could it be separate of our meeting, but immediately following it one night?
It certainly could.
Or-
Or before.
Fri- 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 six.
But-
Schedule it for six.
Yeah, we just, yeah, okay.
Okay. So as a standalone hearing, six PM on the night.
Six PM on the night.
Okay.
Because we really have to get to this, Andrew.
Yeah, yes, you know, we knew that, the grant was recently extended, but there's not infinite time in it, so anything that we want to choose, we have to get it going soon.
Okay, so I'll have Karen, now, that doesn't have to get posted in the paper, does it?
It does, so I'll, I'll do that.
Oh, okay.
And I just wanted to make sure that we had a, a date in time.
Because we really have to figure out what we're doing.
Yes.
And if those monies can do that, that's really important. While we have some heat on this thing, and we think we know what we're doing.
Yeah.
We really need to press.
Yeah, and I'll bring as much information as I can get from DHCBN.
Anything for Mass Development?
Um, I'll, I'll be speaking to Shyla Matthews at a meeting on Friday, so I hope to get some information from her at that point.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back to all of these. Do you want me to leave these in the office, or do you want to take them home or what?
Uh, I will take them home. I will return them tomorrow morning on my way to work.
Well, it's no hurry. I mean, it's a good time.
I know, but the problem is if I don't return them the next day, it takes me three weeks to get them back here, so that's just the way it is. It either happens or it doesn't happen.
What I wanted to bring up other, other tonight was, um, Paul, the custodian, had told me how, I guess, Brenda wants, um, file cabinets and things to be moved out of where it's going to be her new office. And Paul had moved a couple of them out here, but I don't know if this is going to be a, should be a permanent home for any of these, because I know those, I think one of those is the planning board, and one is the advisory board, the file cabinets. And then there are two other ones that belong to you that are in there, and there's one that holds the maps. And what else we got? Then the community club has a big, um, they also have a big cabinet in there, and I think they're gonna do an inventory and see what is, um, in there.
CBA?
Hmm?
CBA as well.
Yep, CBA's got one in there also. And then, um, the copy, copy machine will have to be moved in the mailboxes. I don't know if we had some discussion on the mailboxes, and, um, and with the copy machine, maybe after Brenda leaves, we could put them where Brenda was, and then people would just have access during the day, and when Mike, Mike is here on Wednesday evenings, and if they needed to get their mail on a Wednesday evening, they could probably come in on a Wednesday.
If that doesn't-
Either that, or can we just clear out the space behind the, the counter here, and just for now put the mailboxes there?
I don't know.
I, no.
No.
This mailbox thing has been a pain.
No, it's been, people have been going in and looking through, and things have been missing. So that's why it's better off to be, you know, locked up when nobody's here.
To be secure where Brenda was sitting would be a good thing. And if it doesn't work, if there's complaints, then we need to get lock boxes.
And, um-
Did that cover your question?
Almost.
And that's where the copier should also go, but I don't know where we're gonna put all these file cabinets. I mean, they can't be out here because say some-
And the challenges of the copier, too, a lot of times the committee's needed after hours, you need something after hours, so we may need to look at what some of the options are, because I'm certain.
We'll have to do that. See, maybe we can keep that out here. Well, we'll have-
Until they actually do the bathroom work, could we?
Well, Philip Chaffey had said that, that he wanted that locked, so that's why everything is out here now because of, I don't know.
For now, yeah.
For now, that's got wires, but I don't know if that'll, will be big enough, if there'll be enough room to put, um, the copier in there. We just have to see.
So temporarily, if we leave this stuff out here, mailboxes definitely goes in there.
Yeah, we'll have to put the mailbox.
But temporarily, if we, to the best point, maybe we just clear out behind the counter and, and use that space.
With the copier, yeah.
We should probably, the counter comes apart. They should really maybe try to bring that upstairs.
We talked about that at some point.
But it's still got, I don't know if it's still got old records in it, because I know one time, um, one of our previous tax collectors had some, cap, but she had something there, and I think the town accountant, the previous one, they had things locked up under there also. So we should probably look and see just what's there.
Can you ask, you want to ask them just to see if that's a possibility? Because we had talked about asking Bill to hire somebody to move that.
Well, I know when we have moved at the highways, they always used to help.
They're older now, mostly.
Okay, yeah.
As good as I once was, but I'm not even-
Okay, well, we'll have to get-
Leave it here for now, right?
Yeah, we'll leave it here for now, but we're just gonna have to decide what we're gonna do with all these, uh, file cabinets.
The good news is we're actually making improvements, so we'll face these things as we have, or have to.
All right. So the next one here, we've had a thank you department.
Do you want to?
Oh, anybody else have any? I'm sorry, anything else under other?
It just, just, I met with the financial team today, because Karen had sent me an email that the financial procedure document was updated by the Treasurer's Office, so now it's gone the full circle. And so Karen was sending out that document to the, the principals, the assessor, the, uh, tax collector, accountant, and treasurer, just double-check that these are the documents. I know from the meeting today that there are at least two documents that the accountant is updating, and so that those need to go into the, the current thing. What I suggested for Karen was for our meeting of the night that we adopt that revision. And that the importance of this is, as we talk this audit, that we'll be working towards the use of that document, that everyone is to be working to the tenets of that document, and if we're not, then that's grounds for, uh, display of our action. And when, when you have an auditor come to town and he asks you what your work instructions are, you had better point to what your work instructions are and that you're working to them. They might be wrong, but we need to fix it.
Related to this, I had a discussion with our, our current service provider for the town accountant work. And, uh, in, in the past, when we had looked at getting an additional seat for Vadar, we had only looked at a full seat. I don't know if she's gotten the number yet, but I think that we could get a read-only seat that could be shared between the Board of Selectmen and Advisory. That would, uh, and, and she would be willing to go over a representative from each entity that she could show us how to, uh, be able to have visibility into what the current, like, values are by accounts using the appropriate reports, as well as indications as to whether, uh, appropriate postings were occurring in a timely manner. From a standpoint of ensuring, you know, kind of, kind of a belt and suspenders, we're using a professional service for our accounting service. But this would allow us to, to validate that the transactions that we should be seeing over time are occurring in all of the offices that use Vadar. Um, so we wanted to do just a periodic check to say, hey, on a quarterly basis, are we caught up on post in our revenue? Are we caught up on post in our, our warrants? We would have the option in a read-only environment that would mean that no person could fat finger any type of error who doesn't do that stuff for a living, to be able to see that. I think from a standpoint of, um, due diligence in the go-forward, it might be something worth, um, taking a look at. And it probably would be half the cost of a regular seat for Vadar.
And the other, I understood that you're gonna, uh, be present at the next meeting?
Yeah, well, um, I had the town accountant, and Brenda approached me, and they said that they would like to get together monthly. Different with, than with Al, they said, and we'll have a, they want to do the finance meetings like we used to have.
I, I, this meeting included Al?
Oh, I know, Al will be there, but they said that they wanted me to head it like I used to head.
Oh, I did, I, I think that's, I think that's great.
Yeah, that's what they wanted to do, and I agreed, and I said we could probably maybe have another one, um, probably maybe the second week of July, on a Tuesday, and everybody said a Tuesday is, you know, a good day.
Again, I default to you as far as the timing of that.
Yeah.
The agreements of today were monthly as important.
Oh, yeah, that's what I said.
And the, the next thing was that, um, with respect to Vadar, there was communication between the accountant and others relative to how to approach Vadar, to, to kind of stroke them to work towards what we'd like, rather than what they like. So, uh, there was discussion about that, that you'll, they'll follow up with you, I'm sure, on, which gets to best point as far as the use of Vadar. So there was a good, good, good bunch of discussion. We got into a little bit of town meeting and how we can work to improve that.
Yes.
Because I thought it went well, but there were certain things as, as we went through that we need to kind of get a little bit better at. But again, for the advisory board, for kind of a first pass of, of that team together.
They've done, they did, very, I, you did a very good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, good job this year.
Got a loo- couple of loose connections as far as communication, but again, I think that if we approach it another year, whereas you have that document available, that, uh, those entities that have emails in space or whatever, that there'd be that one final check to make sure that the emails got to who they were supposed to get to and acted upon. But otherwise, it was good.
Agreed. Got notes, um, we, we were, you know, much more together rolling into it, and me personally, I was, you know, very, very comfortable.
You've done a lot of education and, and reached out and done a lot of phone friend work with other communities, so I think that's been valuable.
And then I think it was, you know, I think it was good, too, that you wound up to see Deb Wagner at the Department of Revenue, too, and she's explained a lot more onto you.
She's, she's, she's wonderful. She's, she's the best.
Yeah, they're available to help us at any time.
Yeah.
Would it be appropriate to have a, a, at least once, twice, uh, an advisory representative at this, at this fire committee?
Oh, of course, yeah. Sure, if somebody would like to come in.
Not sure who, won't be me, but, you know, uh, maybe somebody would like to-
No problem if I find out and get, get an email address, who would want to come, because I think what we'll do, they said, uh, Tuesday mornings- No problem if, uh, find out and get, get an email address, who would want to come, because I think what we'll do, they said, uh, Tuesday mornings would be good.
Okay.
When we talk.
Well, now, everyone, we have our first meeting on the eleventh.
Okay.
But I'll be communicating with you.
Okay, Steve, that, that is a good idea. I wouldn't mind that. I think that's a good input, and then they can bring things back to you.
Yeah, yeah, very good, thanks.
Okay, anything else under others?
Nope, nope, those are the two things I was thinking about.
Okay, Beth, anything under other?
Uh, the only thing I was thinking of is I would like to get a current status on tax title. Um.
There was a CBGD, uh, not CBGG, CMRPC email today on tax title that they've hired or, uh, sorted out or ferreted out a entity to do tax title.
Great.
So I sent that to Karen to be distributed.
Right, so, yeah, but I, I, I would like to hear from, from both the tax collector and the treasurer about where we are with the stuff that we've already been acting on, to the best of our knowledge.
Maybe we ought to just, to a point, Beth, maybe have another run. My, my run is about almost a year old now, of top to bottom.
Exactly.
So maybe, could we ask that and put that back on our agenda for another time, Londa?
Which?
Let's have a, have a rerun of who owes us what in tax titles?
Yeah, and actually we need KP to give us an update on what's in Land Court, and if any of that's moved.
Okay, okay.
Let me get that down.
Speaking of one that's moved, July eleventh, we'll be looking forward to some forty thousand dollars worth of income. One way or the other.
So from KP Law, you wanted to know their status with, with Land Court?
And I know that this next date at Land Court will be July eleventh.
So I will talk, if you want me to, I'll talk to the tax collector, and I will talk to the treasurer and tell them, you know, the current status on tax title.
Yeah, and if we could have a run of, of the back taxes. And again, not the, not the nickel dime one, but, but the big, big chunks again. Because we had agreed, I think, with this list that I have, that there were certain properties that we were taking aggressive action. Then there were those that we were just holding and waiting, and again, look to Brenda to give us some of that information.
Yep, exactly.
Anything else? God, I thought Beth was going to say I was correct.
No, I think that's good.
All right.
Brenda, uh, Linda.
Ken?
I'd like to request that you kids pick a route along Hill Road and see what the uh, wildlife is going, it's like, up in the area and could have kind of, and see, watch a million and a half dollars worth of water coming over.
Now, is that where, um, was that on the Garen property?
Across from Salmon Brook.
Yeah, the Garen property, that Vic Garen used to own. Is that the, could, isn't that the, didn't he give that to the fishing game?
I don't know that name, but it's at the top of the hill.
Oh, Vic Garen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fixed property, isn't it? Yeah.
And what that used to be, in nineteen twenty-three, that used to be a field.
Yeah.
Of eleven acre, roughly eleven acres.
Yeah, and then.
And now what's happening is that the birds are going to be able to go up in there.
Yeah.
Well, the kids, they stopped this morning, and the son of the guy at the dorms, but he said he's, I never saw somebody here watching the machines go back.
Well, I'll have to take a ride up.
Just stay out, out, out of the way.
Yeah.
It's so big.
No.
They wouldn't even see you.
No, I'm not going to, no, I should, I should take a ride up and see. No, you.
Twenty o'clock is, uh, very happy with it. And then they're going to the hundred acre thing, so they get this stuff and pull all the stuffs out, make it look nice, or I goes, well, would you guys, is there some possible way we could get a path? I don't.
And we talked to Fletcher about that.
Yeah.
We gave him a suggestion.
He, he smiled.
Yep. Because again, once the tote roads in the, the woods get created, those would be good, good trails.
It would be, yeah.
It'd be like enough Brookfield coming down one forty-eight, and they made a path, and then it'd leave. That's the next hundred acres is going to be. Well, I think, um, Sharon's husband had been covering for how open it's still wide yet, it's not that far from the road. A lot of space opened up.
Yep. Excellent.
Oh, good. That's good. I'm glad to hear that they're going to develop it and make it bird sanctuary. That's nice. No, no, I meant just develop the property, that's what I meant.
Well, I think the conversations that we've had with the new district representative who was here in a part of the open space has made inroads on them actually investing in the town of Brookfield.
Just that a lot of acres is like, something like seven thousand dollars worth of wood. They got a lot of paths up front, and people come and take it. I asked them, I says, where does this money go? It could come back to the towns that we haven't been dating for a couple years. He's smiling, yeah, I think it's okay.
No, okay, so on that, it, it seems how Ken's brought that ugly subject up.
We want to give him.
Our, our friend Al is on top of that particular topic, because there are pilot, it's called pilot money, and that pilot money is to come back to the towns in lieu of taxes. And so there is a great conversation going on between Al and wildlife with respect to what that number ought to be. Because the pilot dough went up, and ours, our input or our feedback was flat. And that's because money's going to other places like Boston. And so it's, is that fair, was the question being asked. Speaking of Angobi's aid and how, uh, we're, we're pushing back on what is owed to us through the pilot program.
Hmm.
So, anyway, that's all I know about that topic.
The whole piece there, on that great ten second one to the line, must be filled with all wildlife, so.
Right.
If you're interested, a lot of.
They're probably the biggest landowner in town.
And that was going to cap, uh, Canada. Take one, right?
It's pretty funny when we're exporting wood to Canada.
We are, in China. That's a whole other topic. Anyway.
Anyway, any others from anybody else?
Time to go home.
No, we got to do correspondence.
Oh, go for it.
We'll do this quick. Uh, this is from the school, from the superintendent, and, um, she wrote this to her, but he's not, he, she's at and half of the Brookfield School Committee at Tantascwa. And the students of the town of Brookfield, they want to extend a heartfelt thank you for the cooperation of the Brookfield Highway in ensuring safe road passes during this past week.
Good job again.
Good job again. All right.
But again, back to climate change. We're dealing with ice.
Mm-hmm.
And you, and you got assault, and it's unfortunate, but that's what you got to do.
Now, this is from Doug Powers. Uh, he's a property, he's from North Brookfield. He says, as required by law, I am informing you, I intend to remove fifty-seven A Molasses Hill Road from chapter sixty-one. It consists of approximately thirty-one acres of land, and he's requesting that you consider this request at your June, at the meeting this evening, uh, and he sees if we have any interest in acquiring the land. If not, he would appreciate a thank you for your time and consideration. And I don't think.
What's the address again on that?
Mm-hmm, oh, the address? It was an email he sent.
Yeah, his address, thirty-one Molasses Hill.
Nobody's property address.
Oh. It's fifty, fifty-seven Molasses Hill Road. Um, and then it's, he has thirty acres of land, thirty-one acres of land.
And so it's going to solar.
Oh.
And so, uh, what we do here is that I don't think that the town has an interest, nor do we have monies to do anything anyway.
No, I don't think we have any interest in it.
And so the motion would be that we, um, would not take advantage of the right of first refusal, so that would be the motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And then, uh, for discussion, this, these are monies that would go into the fund that we created.
Yes, the revolver fund we just created.
And that maybe the next time, we can decide where those funds go. Um, I would suggest our, with specific to open space and the grant that we're writing for the playground in Lewis Field, that this money could go towards, um, the, we're getting set, uh, the Lewis Field, uh, project would be, um, seventy percent money from the state, a grant for that, and thirty percent would be of the town. This money could go, and again, I'm looking at Steve, to suggest that this would maybe monies that would go towards the town's portion of that payment.
Okay, he has, I didn't notice, he had a map. I guess there are a few houses around it, but this must be the whole area where he wants to plant.
Yep.
I spoke with Ben Stah last week, and they wanted to, they presented them in a mall, with a grid, but they wanted a two million dollar transfer station either in Brookfield, I think, thus far.
Substation, not transfer station.
I'm sorry.
Substation.
So they're disturbed, twenty, making figures, so they, they, because they already own the land, and they wanted to buy it again. But Brookfield could have got a piece of that, so, trying.
Trying.
Okay, Karen's.
Also, we need to vote that.
Uh, yeah, Karen said maybe if you wanted to explain something.
Oh, yes, I know.
She said that.
Okay, so we're going to vote the, that we're not interested in Molasses Hill.
Oh, okay, we're not, okay, I'd like to have a motion that.
You have a motion and a second.
Yeah, we have a motion, and we have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now, um, what we have here is the recommendation from the Beach Committee as far as the contract with wildlife for this year. And so they're, they're recommending that we sign, uh, on the town's behalf to move forward with, uh, the Beach Committee working with wildlife this year. So if you could sign, motion to sign the beach access, uh, document and your signature by the licensee. So the beach cleanup has gone well.
Good.
And.
When are they supposed to be starting over there on the bridge?
I don't know.
Well, maybe starting collecting monies this year?
No, the, okay, so where this is, is, that's a possibility, but what's, a side, will have to be a side agreement. What we've, what they've done is they've made a recommendation for the fees. And so that needs to get agreed to between, uh, wildlife and the town or through the committee. And if it does, then there will be that, an action to move forward with the fees for the beach only. They're only going to work on the beach, they're not working the boat access thing, at least for, for this year.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and, and again, the fees, the whole idea of the fees, so if we're on camera and people hear it, the idea is that the beach is not used only by the town of Brookfield. It's used by a lot of other folks, and this is a way that we might be able to collect some money from those folks entering town. If it works, great. If it doesn't, at least we try.
And frankly, people value something more even if the fee is nominal.
Oh, yeah.
So the, it, it, even just the fact that you get charged a fee to be there tends to change behavior.
Yep.
So.
I wish them luck. They're doing a great job.
Do you kids charge these clubs, fishing clubs that you still?
That's what we're working on for next year.
That's the next.
See, some of them like twenty-five thousand dollar boats, I mean, ten dollars is going to hurt them.
So, so here's the deal. The learning in this process is that the fishermen cannot be charged. That those that are, are launching their boats can't be charged for fishing, they can be charged for launching. That those funds would then be, uh, if we could choose to collect them, would then go towards the port of party that the boat access people are paying the, uh, the port of party, uh, expense from November, uh, from April to November. So that, actually, the state is actually paying for a portion of this that, uh, we, we were unaware of.
I, I think I could give, um, I'll give the, 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 the.
Davis, looking forward to your sealing that deal. Good, thank you.
Okay, all right.
We voted that, right?
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Yeah, good.
Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, from Chief Martel. Uh, for twenty eighteen Volunteer Fire Assistance Program, we, he has a grant that's been approved for, uh, one thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
And this is from, um, Barbara Supernot, the woman that's going to be doing the swimming classes over at South Pond. She wants to, uh, change the date from, uh, July eighth to, uh, July eighteenth to the twenty-sixth.
Can we get that to David?
Oh, yeah, I got, okay, I'll take, take it out until Louis. I need.